Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for October 30th, 2019. First item is call as a slip of flag.
[inaudible]
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Town Administrator Weekly Update. What was yours, Ken?
Hi there. Good evening. I brought a friend tonight.
Hi.
I asked Michelle to join us and we'll be doing that, I think, every couple of months. I think that some of the things that I give as updates, she plays such an important role in, I thought it would be good for her to be here and answer some of the questions. And I think it originally stemmed from after our conversation last week about the individual lines and overdrafts on lines. If that's how we're going to move forward, we want to, I wanted her to have an opportunity to at least show you and explain to you the ones that are already overdrawn. So she's here, we're going to go over some of her things that pertain to her first so that she can get home to her family, unless she wants to say. She smiles. All right. You know what? So the first thing that, I guess, a little bit of a correction from last week, would you guys want to take these? A correction, more of an addition, and I left something in the other office, so I'm going to let Michelle explain on one of them. But Mrs. Hart asked last week in the public meeting, she mentioned that we are talking about Article 43 a lot and wanted to know all of the concerns. So the one that I remembered that I didn't mention is on the back of this page, the Xerox contract of the Fire Department. We have mentioned it, but I failed to mention it last week.
I think we addressed it.
We did address it, but when she asked last week, I couldn't think of that last one off the top of my head, so I wanted to follow up and make sure she knew that. The one that I wanted to draw attention to while I sneak out and make some quick copies of one document is the ambulance billing. So what you've continued to hear from me week after week is TG Higgins write-off billing. We know that was $45,000, we know there's no authorization, we know the attorney's working on it, but the beginning sentence and the ending sentence, we didn't cover at all, somehow I just skipped over that. So Michelle's going to tell you what the auditor's looking for in that aspect.
So in our contract, the contract says that the billing company will send out bills three times and they'll follow up with a phone call if they have a phone number for the patient. She wants to know how we're going, how it's possible that we can get verification that bills were sent out three times, that they followed their protocol on their end. And none of our reports show that, so I think that's just a conversation to have with MRS that they are indeed sending out bills at least three times before they let them sit. And the fee schedule for rescue billing, it also references that in the contract, references them working with the town and looking at them on an annual basis, you know, the fees, whether they need to be raised or lowered. And we, to date, we, of course, we've only been with them for a year, but to date, we haven't had any such conversations with them, whether, you know, at least not at this level. It might have happened through the department directly and we just don't know about it. But she'd like to see something there, and she'd also like to see a policy for the fee schedule. We don't currently have one of those. We do have, we have a fee schedule, but it's not formally adopted by the Board of Selectmen, so she'd like to see that.
The fee schedule wasn't adopted?
Not for the runs, not for specifics on the runs.
I thought we did have that.
She also would like to see the board come up with some type of policy on what to do with the old lingering debt, you know, something that's more than 12 months old that we're probably not going to collect on, they've already exhausted their billing, whether we want to send that to collection agencies or review each one case by case, but she would like to see a policy regarding that as well.
So we're hoping as we're going through the policies in a week-by-week meeting, we're hoping to, once we get through them, start adding on some of those, because we have, you know, a few that are policies that we follow but aren't necessarily, you know, written out like they should be, and those will be a couple that Michelle and I will work on presenting something to you for that with the...
Probably on that one, anything to do with that should be involved the Fire Chief as well.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
All right. So everything, anything else from the auditor? I mean, they know that the gym at some point unfortunately, January, February is probably going to close, 43, we're working on each week, bank recs are being done, and the copier, the new chief will, that will be reiterated to him, so. Good on that?
Yep.
All right. So one of the things that, like I said, we talked about last week was, do departments need approval to overspend one line if the bottom line is not overspent? And we said yes, and we're going to work on some sort of policy for that, but, so we've made these copies, we're just going to go down through, Michelle's going to explain to you, just the highlighted ones, so you can, you can take these home with you and look at all of them. The way that we calculated it, most departments, most lines should be at about 33, 35 percent based on where we are in the fiscal year. So everybody is kind of where they should be, there's a couple that are close, but we're going to go through those. So the first one I can answer on her behalf, the first one, the FICA and Social Security and Medicaid municipal management, this is just from building maintenance. So this is overdrafted because we brought in a second person to help with all of the work in the back rooms as far as the strapping and the ceilings were falling. So that's building maintenance, correct, why that one's overdrawn?
Correct.
All right. So turn the page, the next one, tax abatements. You know, for the last so many years, we, I think, issued very little abatements. This year, we had a flux of them, even though that looks like a high number and it's way overdrawn, you really need to look at the supplement number and see how much of that washed, because if you remember in your abatements, you might have had five abatements of over $2,000, because you had supplements that attached them, so that really was a wash.
Yep. That would be wrong. Person billed, things of that nature.
Right, exactly. Exactly. Wrong owner as of April 1st.
Yep.
The next one, dues and memberships under land use.
Yeah, there, I think it was just, now we have two, we have a CEO and a deputy CEO, and so we're paying memberships for both of them because you get discounts on the class. It pays for itself in the end. And there was one, the fee went up quite a bit this year as to what it's been in the past, so that just wasn't anticipated.
Page five.
And so page five, under the roads, for the most part, you all, you've seen the payroll sheets that come in every week. As far as what's on the payroll sheet, that's the account that I charge it to. When bills come in, I kind of, I use my discretion looking at the bill and what it is and what line it should hit, but there are things that, you know, in creating the budget, they didn't, you know, they broke, we broke things out more than we ever have this year. And so like, the labor, it kind of eats itself up in spring and general labor, but what was budgeted for labor is overdrawn, so if, if we're looking at approval every time something overdraws, we're looking at approval every week.
For the roads.
But, you know.
Is there any way that you could take that labor number there and, you know, it was like when I used to do it, we kind of, I always said it was, really wasn't worth doing because we'd have this problem.
Right, right.
But the way we talked about itemizing everything and making them do this line item, it kind of proves that what I was talking about was kind of correct, but at this point in time, if you look at, say, I don't know, we've got spring labor.
Yep.
Okay, but you take that number there, you know, you could swap those numbers around to increase that number, estimate what you think in the future so you don't have to do it every week? And we can, we can do something like that, correct?
Yeah, we certainly could. Of course, I don't, I don't know what, I mean, it would have to be a sit-down with the road commissioners.
Yeah.
But I mean, and, I mean, you certainly know, more than anybody, it's going to change constantly.
Yeah.
Now, do the road commissioners, do they have these account, they have these same account numbers and lines?
Yeah, well, that, those were the account numbers that we set up when, at budget season.
Yeah, I, this is really the first time I've really looked at the, the road part of it and how you've got to set up with general labor, spring labor, instead of just having labor. I'm just kind of confused.
So you're thinking maybe combine that?
It doesn't make any sense. All you're doing is you're making it more difficult on anybody to try to do your bookwork when at the same time, it's all coming out of the same number.
It wouldn't make any difference really where you pull the number from.
If you put down labor costs, you know, this year should be a good year for these guys to sit down and see what their labor's costing them for the next fiscal year to be able to budget and say, okay, well, we went over $15,000, you know, in eight months into, you know, into the 10 months, whatever, into the season. I think my mouth is wrong there, but they'll get a good idea of what their budget should be for the next season. It's going to change every year.
Yeah.
It usually does, depending on what they're doing, but I just, I think we can confine this a little bit better.
So in regards to the roads and seeing that there are, because I don't think we're going to come across anything else that's, that's going to continue to be overdrawn the way that, that these are, I mean, is it, if she's continuing to watch the bottom line and you guys are watching the individual projects, I mean...
Well, if you, if you look at this here on 503 on the roads, so what you've got here is the same problem you have with the labor. You have culverts, gravel, and then it says materials. Well, those are all materials. So that should be one line.
Yeah, and I think materials, we've been, like, Curlex and stuff like that, you know, your grass seed.
But at the end of the day, they're still all the material, you're trying to itemize, you're almost micromanaging those two, those three line items.
And in the past, budgeting and just calling everything materials was, was much easier because, you know, you could kind of figure out in total what you might use.
Well, at the same time, I think it gives a little bit of flexibility to the road commissioner, you know, at the end of the day, you figure up all your grass seeds, gravel, your culverts, sorry about that, and, you know, and make, make, it'd be easier figuring it for them at the end of the day. You know, if we could combine that line, I don't know what you guys think about that.
Make those moves mid-season.
I like them broken up, but, I mean, it's nice to know what you spend on culverts.
Right.
It's nice to know what you spend on gravel.
That's my concern with, you know, not going back to the bottom line.
Right.
Right, I mean, it is nice to...
And that's what we've always done, is we've done bottom line.
Yeah.
Because once we condense these, I mean, right now, it, it makes that, makes it easier for them, you know, to see, oh, you know, well, we spent, you know, this much on culverts specifically, and you can look right there and see it. And I think that was the intention during budget season with the Budget Committee when they made suggestions on breaking things down more.
Yeah. I mean, I kind of like the way this is broken out with culverts, gravel, and everything else can fall into materials. And you could change the word material to something different if you wanted to.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because that's going to be, what, that's going to be your sill fence, it's going to be your, your undermat, it's going to be grass seed, it's going to be whatever else you use.
Right.
So...
I mean, if you guys are fine with this, it doesn't bother me, it's just going to work for you guys.
Yeah.
And the road commissioners, I mean, the only thing what you got here, obviously the numbers are going to have to be adjusted, they're going to have to fine-tune these numbers, you know, because we've got 3,700 in the negative, 700 or something in the negative, but on the upside, you've got 5,000, almost 6,000 some dollars on the upside on those two there, so obviously those aren't getting used.
And I'm sure under, under materials, I'm sure they've done culverts, so there must be some culverts, probably that, probably some of that number can be moved.
It looks like gravel.
Budgeted 2,000, yeah, they've spent 479, 89 or this particular one today.
To date, I mean, that's what we foresee in bills.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess going back to what I, what I was going to say was that knowing that, you know, so, I mean, if you're going to continue to line item and budget like this, it is helpful to leave it like this for Michelle's sake so that at the, so the next year you can better budget on how much coal patch is going to be or how much materials, if you're going to keep it this way. But, you know, even maybe a one-time approval, I mean, just to have her continue to watch the road budgets, you know, weekly, and knowing that you guys are looking at the projects, this could be one that you could make exempt from coming back week to week if she's telling you that, you know, now that the labor is negative, it's going to continue to be that way, but, I mean, you don't have to decide that tonight, this is just an FYI for now.
You look down, you look down here, I mean, you've got some line items there, like 31 some thousand dollars and 8,500, you know, those numbers there can be, you know, lessened and improved and, you know, put into the other lines, but...
Okay, yep.
And the next page is District 2, same, same issues.
Same thing, yep.
Page seven, the transfer station, the building repair and maintenance, Bob's had some...
Some work done by...
Some work done up there, he's had some stuff hauled off and had some fencing, guardrails or something put in up there, so that, that is over.
So we don't expect that to go over much more, right?
Right. Page eight, we have office supplies for cable. It's kind of offset by, he budgeted this year for equipment and he didn't budget for office supplies separately, so I think that's just that explanation there, and that's it so far.
Not terrible, I mean, it's all easily explained.
And I do anticipate seeing negatives on mileage this year for probably anybody that uses mileage, just because our rate, the reimbursement rate went up this year by the feds.
What's it at now?
58 cents.
About 3 cents a mile or something like that.
Okay.
Any questions, anything else on the expense report? So is this something, I mean, monthly, I think, is when she submits it to you generally? I'm seeing that kind of pertains to Michelle. So let's say a couple of months ago, I don't want to be quoted on the date, we, she had given us this memo, things for the Board of Selectmen to consider, so now that you've had it, time to kind of think about it, I thought we could go through while she's here and talk about them. The purchase order policy, we never really got a yay or an aye. Are you, you know, are you looking to move forward with that? Are you comfortable with the line item and the way that the, the way that it's working now? Or do you want, do you want us to dig into giving you some draft policies, purchase order policies?
Aren't we doing a purchase policy now, pretty much when they come up and they do their presentation?
Well, the roads, the roads should do, but a purchase policy, so I, today I ordered, I ordered $500 for shelving. I'd have, I'd get a purchase policy in advance, have that signed off. Now, I knew I had the money in the account and it was budgeted for, so we don't, we don't have to go that route right now.
Yeah.
So anytime any department would need something, we'd have to come to you for a purchase order first.
No, I'd say we can hold off on that right now.
Yeah, I think we'll leave it the line item budgeting.
And the, you know, between myself and certainly the treasurer, she's right on top of those and we won't ask for something that's not budgeted for. Uncollected debt, ambulance billing policy, I think that once Burke and Clegg finishes this, then we can talk about a policy, so that's definitely on the, on the list. Hardship waiver application, this is something that the current billing system company has asked us for, so we can see what happens with the Fire Chief position and maybe get some surrounding towns' thoughts on how much they waive if there's no insurance at all, and maybe over the next couple of weeks, we can bring you some samples and see if that's something you even want to, well, actually, I should ask you, is that something a policy you'd even consider before I draft it all?
I would, I would think so.
Yeah.
And you, basically it's for someone without any insurance.
Right.
And I think part of that, Michelle, was a cash discount, right?
Right.
Whether or not we would give a cash discount, you know, within so many days of the bill.
Yep.
So that could be incorporated on the, so, we can look for samples on that one. Ambulance subscription, again, I hate to keep going back to once you appoint a new Fire Chief, this might be a good conversation that, that we can have, the board can have with them. She mentions that Shapley offers something that doesn't release the patient from financial responsibility, but I think it allows them one free ride.
Yeah, so, and it covers, so it covers anything that insurance doesn't pay, like what your out-of-pocket would be. It covers that.
So we'll check with the Fire Chief once he or she's appointed and see if that's something they're interested in pursuing. Committee purchases and procedures, let's see, so regardless of who, it's ours, I don't care. Regardless of who requests checks or orders, I believe that it should be one designated person from a committee regardless, we're following that now. She's just requesting a formal written policy, so when we get to the end of it, and that's, that's the thing, and, you know, and I, some of the policies, it might be, and I use the rec as an example because the lady's right in front of me, but with new committee members like that, they would have no way of knowing what we call standing policies, they're not in writing yet, but it's something we've always done, and as new board members come, we ask them and they want to continue to do it, but to benefit especially new committees, we need to get those things in writing, so we'll work on that. Capital Improvement Committee, the Selectmen are advertising and we have been advertising. The last, we talked about it about two weeks ago, we talked about maybe reaching out to some department heads and maybe getting a department head from the Fire Department, from the transfer station, and a couple of members from, to see if that was something up...
We actually had, I think Roland had a pretty good point there when he had spoke about actually coming up with a policy for the committee.
Yes.
Before we actually get the committee, so we don't put the cart before the horse.
Who it's made up out of.
Yeah.
Yep.
So a policy first of who you would want on it.
Well, yeah, that and what its duty is, so you don't start it, then have to create its duty afterward.
Right, and that's another thing, I, ever since I've been in my current office, every year, the auditor has asked for, you know, where's your capital plan, so.
So the last one, FYI budget timeline, scratch, because we did that and we presented it, so.
I have some extras to add.
Great. Oh, I'm sorry.
So our insurance company for workers' comp, they offer a 3% discount if we have a written, a formal written return to work policy when somebody gets injured, we don't have anything written at this time, so I think it would be great, I mean, 3% doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're talking...
It's a lot when you're talking workers' comp.
You're talking $25,000 a year, it's a lot.
Does it support that? Let's draft in some...
So, you know, that would be nice to have in place before we renew next, next June.
You would think we would have had that with our personal policy and all that anyways.
Right.
All of these things need to be updated.
A few people have asked me about the, the new earned leave that passed through the state this year. I recently went to a training and we discussed it in-depth, the earning one hour for every 40 hours, that does not apply to municipal employees, so we won't be responsible for that for the part-time people that don't already earn PTO. Also, another thing, in the hiring process, it's no longer legal to ask prospective employees what their previous salary was. You can ask them after you've offered them a position, but you can't ask them before it gets to that point. And public officials elected and appointed now need to comply with a right-to-know training. I know that Jen's had some hard time getting, you know, some current members to...
I can't get them sworn in.
Right.
I mean, and it's, you know, we, that's one of the things that it's, that's not, I mean, it's, they're putting more emphasis on that, so you're going to, every, everybody that's appointed or elected is going to see a memo within the next two weeks from my office. It's very simple, it's an online training, it'll take a matter of seconds, but it's, it is something that's required, and as I understand it, as long as we have a paper trail that we made the attempt, but something unfortunately you'd have to think about it when it comes to reappointments, if they're not doing the training.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so Michelle, I have one, two, three, four policies that we're going to work on?
Yes.
Do we put them in a hat? I got two.
We used to have a committee for that.
For the policy, we did, we had a policy committee.
Yeah, we did.
Those shouldn't be too bad. So anything on, anything else on the items to consider, so we've pretty much moved on with those. This next one, this is just an FYI as we're getting closer, I know we're going to, we're going to discuss this later, but with the Fire Commission meeting on Monday and that getting closer, I did ask Michelle to draw up some information, this is just for the board, once you appoint a Fire Chief, then certainly he or she will be brought in and we'll spend some one-on-one time with Michelle on the budget, but this just gives you an idea of, based on the hourly rate of the prior chief, based on the 20 hours, what you guys have advertised for part-time, how many weeks are remaining, where she's at, where the budget's at, the interim, the new fire medic, overall bottom line, it was what, about 1,500? No, I thought it was 2,000, oh, $2,515. That's a number they would need to find in other areas of the budget.
In their Fire Department budget, so...
And did that include the furnace?
The furnace has been taken out of their building maintenance.
Okay.
I discussed that with the deputy chief on Monday, that, that it was $1,500 above what?
Above the 15,000.
Yeah, Article 11. Article 11. So this, these, the whole idea was that this Fire Chief salary, what we initially budgeted, was going to offset a part-time and a new full-time, and so that's what will be short there, so that's going to have to hit their budget somewhere else at $2,500.
And do they have the money in the budget somewhere else?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We're answering for you, yes.
Currently, there's, currently, we don't have any money.
We'll make sure we subtract it out of somewhere for them so they don't spend it twice.
Yeah.
That's just a FYI. Look at you, I didn't give them a handout on the last one because I think they've already had it. Last one, while she was here, was just Emory Mills.
Damn.
The dam.
Damn.
I'm still awaiting a response on when we'll be expected to pay for this, these improvements that they're doing over there, but we're looking at a deficit of over $20,000 from what we budgeted.
How much?
$20,000.
$20,000, yep.
And do we have to pay that this year?
Yes, it'll have to be sometime this year, this fiscal year.
Fiscal year, before, before the end of June.
I haven't gotten a clear answer as to when they're going to expect us to pay them.
Yeah, they haven't even started the boring yet, so they're still a third of the way into the project right now.
Maybe we could sink it in the schools, do you think we buy that much time?
I'm not sure.
March, April, might get lucky.
It's, it's hard to get a response.
Yeah.
I'm also still waiting to find out what the anticipated...
Maintenance.
Maintenance, annual maintenance fees are for this year.
Yeah, I don't remember what they were.
I wanted you to hear from someone else, it's hard to get a response.
Oh, I know, I know it is.
Yeah.
We are trying.
Yeah.
We are trying, yeah.
Yep, yep, okay.
I did get an apology from the Finance Director in Sanford, you know, explaining that she's reached out to the person who's in charge of the annual maintenance part of it anyhow, and she just hasn't gotten a response yet.
Okay, sure. Okay.
All right, so I've got just a few more things, they'll actually end up taking a break, so we can sneak out together if you want to sit through that, because they'll take a break to do this. Next few things, I'll try to move along quickly, just FYI to the other two Selectmen, that Michelle and I and Kim as a liaison are going to sit down with the Chair and Vice Chair, I think, of the Rec and the Treasurer, Friday night at 6 o'clock, just as a, just kind of put everything, you know, just talk about things and policies and a lot of those written policies that, you know, and they're, they're not familiar with, so. Wanted to let you know that the Alliance Club gave us $200 for our turkey baskets.
Nice.
Came in and brought a check, and they brought us a check for $500 with a fuel assistance.
Wow.
So Michelle and I generally try to give that to somebody that doesn't qualify through general assistance, so that's a nice backup.
Good.
There is a memo out for, oh, I did have it, memo out for the town report Friday, November 15th, and Michelle, I'm going to say, I didn't get yours today.
I'm going to tell you that mine's been done since August.
When we...
I'm just waiting for the, the final numbers from the auditor for the undesignated fund, but mine's done.
We joked, because when we set a date, I said, the minute I pass this out, Michelle's going to have her sent, so...
She'll be sitting there going...
It's on the S drive.
It's on the S drive.
She'll be hit and send, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so please get your town report letters out, and Dave, you and I are going to talk about the road ones that you were the interim for, for that position. I tried pushing it off on your son, but you and I are going to do that, I guess.
I would like to be in some of the hopefully, you know...
Well, this is going to be road-related again, okay. So just an update from, from Legal in regards to, oh, my friend, Legal in regards to the legal in regards to, oh, my friend, legal in regards to the forestry, the question went back and forth as far as the, what plan was that, the forest management planned on?
Town farm.
Town farm road. So legal says that the warrant article clearly authorized them to spend the money to develop the plan. Although it contemplates future timber revenues, I don't see explicit authorization for the board to sell off the timber. Unless we already have an ordinance or other outstanding warrant article authorizing the board to sell off the timber, I would seek town meeting approval. We ran it by MMA for second opinion, they agree. So basically, the forest chair came to me and wanted to know now that that was approved, can they actually do the work? Sounds like we have to have a.
Sounds like no.
No.
Okay.
Excuse me. Uh, next one's just FYI on the election schedule, just pass that around, that's for next Tuesday, you will see the appointments coming up in your new business. One thing I missed from when Michelle was here, and I'm gonna take off the agenda, because it's more of an FYI, RHR Smith did confirm to Wednesday, December fourth, for the meeting to come in and talk to you guys, talk to the townspeople, so if anybody has questions, now's the time to be sending them in, so we'll advertise, put something on the website, slides, I am where we can.
Okay.
The next one is, so a very nice couple came in and they asked to be, remain nameless, "Dear town, we have a Generec standalone generator that we would like to donate to anyone. Prefer an elderly person, couple or family who can use it. They are the town to have to have it installed, or they'd have to come and get it, because we're not able to deliver it. The only reason we're getting rid of it after doing some updates is it no longer runs the whole house. I don't know a lot about generators, but she says it's only a couple of years old and it's very large and good shape, it would just need to be wired in, so if anybody out there thinks it's something that they could benefit from, or she offered a town building, let me know."
We, uh, we're going up there to the tower now.
I was just gonna say, we don't have one at the tower.
And we had discussed that last year when we.
That doesn't take a lot of juice up there, I don't think.
She did say that she dropped that same packet off to a couple of towns.
Yeah, eighty-three amps, yeah, yeah, we just don't know what the, okay.
Right, that propane, right?
Yes.
I would say we could definitely use that.
I'd say we pass that over to the fire department.
Okay.
They're gonna take care of the tower.
All right, and see if they wanna contact us.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll hang on to that for later on tonight.
Okay, a couple of just cards that came in, they wanted to run by you, one was just a thank you to the clerk's office for all of the hard work verifying the people's veto petitions, so that came in. Another one, on behalf of the Southern Maine Veterans Memorial Cemetery Association, I'm guessing with taxes that came and went, Michelle paid out the first half of all the donations, so they wanted to let you know how thankful they were for that, and to the voters of Acton. I have not read this, because I literally just opened the packet about fifteen minutes before the meeting, this was a large envelope that was addressed to the board of selectmen and to the planning board, it's from Wilson Lake Association, so if you just wanna take that home and read it, let me know if there's anything you want me to do.
Yeah, I've read it.
Everybody read it?
I have read it.
Oh, you got it already?
I got a copy of it earlier, just because I'm a property owner.
Oh, okay. Anything we need to do with it, or it's just informational?
It's just more on the work that's happening up off of.
Well, planning board did get it as well, so. Census representatives were in the office again today, they are still desperately looking for employees to work the twenty-twenty census, and they are paying sixteen fifty-eight a mile, or sixteen dollars an hour, or fifty-eight cents a mile, for census workers. We've got it posted everywhere, if anybody wants more information on the census. Ladies and gentlemen, get everybody's a chair. Whole room on that side, all the fire guys and poor women are standing. You're gonna wanna have a seat, it's gonna be a few minutes. I got you as close to the top as I can, but it's gonna be a few minutes. I just wanted to let you know that the copier downstairs that you approved a little while ago is gonna be installed, we found a time it worked for everybody, Monday around two o'clock, so they'll be up and running with that. Closet downstairs, I think two of the three, you saw it, painting's all done, Mr. Paul has gotten all the shelves, so it's just a matter of tidying that up by next week, so that should be done. You did approve a computer for code enforcement, we had a surprise need for the treasurer for one, so we went ahead and ordered those, because her bank is not going to be, what was the word?
The software that.
On Windows seven.
On Windows seven, Microsoft isn't gonna support it as of January one, so.
So if we wanted to deposit checks, we thought we'd get another one.
Probably a good idea.
Those have been ordered. I think that's all I have. Do you, or would you consider sneaking in the Girl Scouts before we go into the next? I think they just wanna ask you a quick little question.
I have no, no problem with that.
Yeah, they're first under department heads anyway.
Yep, so, and then we have at least one out there.
We don't, the agenda's, the agenda's.
The agenda's fine, so we're all set with that.
So we just need to pull E, because I just did that one, I was gonna pull that off. Under new business?
New business.
Okay, get rid of that.
Oh, yeah.
And we, we still got this under us at the warrant, don't we?
Yeah, so, you wanna take a little break after this, and I'll let Michelle out.
Yep, okay. Go to the Girl Scouts.
I love your boots. You can move that, hold that right down, or?
Hi, I'm Quinn, I'm five, I'm a Girl Scout.
Hi there.
Hi, Quinn.
We wanna help our friends. Who don't have any food for Thanksgiving. Can we put a box in? At town hall. To collect food. For Thanksgiving baskets.
Of course you can.
That's a great idea.
How many boxes? We wanna collect food for two baskets.
Okay, I'm sure that can happen.
There's five daisies.
So, my name's Cory Long, I decided to take over the Daisy Troop in Acton, and we are doing a food drive to help our friends at school, if they don't have bask, food for Thanksgiving. So the first service project the girls have decided to do was a food drive.
Nice, nice, nice.
So we will present baskets. I don't know if you guys are open the third Thursday, like, the third one?
Yes, we are.
You are? All right, well, and we'll probably be back up then to donate them.
And do you have, do you have, obviously not gonna mention it, but do you have the two families in mind, or you're just gonna give it to the school and the school's gonna decide?
We were gonna donate it to the selectmen, and you guys could just distribute.
So, and I'm just thinking, so you know by now, we're doing our turkey baskets as well, so we have twenty, but I, believe it or not, I already have a couple of people in mind that we kinda missed, so, and if the Girl Scouts maybe wanted to come, not Girl Scouts, daisies, if they wanted to.
They're Girl Scouts.
Girl Scouts, if they wanted to come help when we're ready to put all the baskets together that day. And they can watch the fire department and the contract deputy deliver them, it's really a great time, so maybe we can coordinate that as well.
You gotta spot up here that they can.
Yeah, absolutely, we will make them. How do you feel about beans? Everybody that gets a basket is gonna get beans, so you know.
Sounds good.
Yay! Bring them up anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it very much. You're welcome, you're welcome, thank you.
All right, we'll take that. And so I'm gonna remove E, any other changes to the agenda, sir, ma'am's?
Nope, we got an executive session, we're doing.
So would you like to do that?
Two at one time?
So you wanna do one and then put another one a little further down, or how do you wanna do it? Okay, where would you like your second one?
Sure, so, so what do you wanna do now?
We got one, let's start it and end it with them, how's that?
Okay, so I'm gonna.
Add A-G-H-I.
Okay, here, sir.
Other executive.
Anything else, anything you need from Miss Michelle?
The executive session.
Oh, I wanted to mention that.
Now, let's split them up.
You wanna do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wanted to mention that I've been picked for jury duty.
I'm sorry.
I'm kind of excited about it.
She is, be careful.
Of course, I, I might happen to know people that come before me, so I might get disqualified, but.
Have you ever been picked before?
No, I've never done it before, I've been wanting to.
Yeah, I've done it before.
So my availability in November and December is going to vary day by day.
Yep.
But the work will get done, so.
Great, well, good luck with that. It is interesting, so, but thank you for coming in tonight.
No, no problem.
Appreciate it. Signed everything else except for the school.
Yeah, actually, yeah, I've already done this one. I don't think I did the other one.
Bob would be proud of us. Innocent.
Oh, yes.
Says we take too long.
What are we paying for salt, do you remember?
That was fifty-four, so I can't remember.
I'm just curious.
They've been delivering it all day.
Yeah.
All yesterday anyways.
Yeah, because they just sent us the quote, and I wanna say it was in the high forties. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll give you this one back in just a second, it's the only one I haven't done.
You need the school? I think everything else.
I think you did, did you?
Not this one.
Did you sign the thing?
Here, you want half of these?
Sure.
We're not down to here yet. I don't think so, unless the power was going out. Okay, I'll check the thing. I'll go check on it right now, actually. Yeah.
The whole week's been dreary, just makes everybody tired.
I'd handle my grandmother as like having a three-year-old again, like, seriously, I feel like I could, just repeat yourself, over and over.
I signed this one here, no, we did not, hopefully I'm not mixing up like I usually do.
Is it next Wednesday we have our meeting, not in Augusta?
Is it next Wednesday?
I think so, try to remember to ask Jennifer.
Yeah, I gotta make sure that I, uh. Yeah. How long is that meeting, is that a whole day?
Probably. Can't say a hundred percent, but.
Sure is.
I even turned, I turned the clock back to.
Just for the timer was off.
Yeah, just off a little, well, it was set to come on right now, so just.
Good thing somebody noticed.
Yeah, would Roland go? Okay.
Find a.
No.
I need to get some, pick up some more allen wrenches, I, they seem to disappear.
More what?
Well, like that, I can see him holding the door, holding his fingers in the door, because there's no allen wrench back there.
Oh, yeah, I noticed it wasn't one, I had to steal this one the other day.
They often leave. I should probably start checking those later, before we get the deposits back.
Yeah, stick it back in.
I should probably.
What's that? You signed the front one, did you? Yep, you did, good, okay, good, good. Roland, it's all set. It was set to come on like right now, so, and I've already set it back for the time change. Yeah. Yeah, no, it was, like I say, it was another half a minute and it would have been on, but it's all better now. I said it to come on, I think at five. We're here in a, let's see, approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-third.
I'll second that.
Move to second to sign the minutes of October twenty-third, all in favor, all opposed? Okay. Let's see, department heads and committee chairs, we've done the Girl Scouts already, correct?
Yes.
We have the rec committee.
Hi, so I'm Lisa Long, Chair of the rec, and I have Carol.
Carol, Comas Boomway, Vice Chair.
So, we came tonight to just give you a brief update, basically on soccer season, we serve seventy-three.
Seventy-three kids.
Seventy-three kids. It was a huge hit, it was one of our biggest programs to date, I keep saying that every month, every program.
Seventy-three kids from in town and back.
In Acton, K, pre-K to sixth grade, no other towns.
Wow.
That's our biggest participation on any sport in years.
We keep saying that time after time, it just keeps growing and growing and growing, and we couldn't be happier about that. So basketball season is slowly getting started.
Yeah, practices will start next week, and we're doing the Socupi Valley League again like last year, so it's Shapley, Limerick, Newfield, Alfred. We, we're faced with a huge challenge with the availability of the gym at the school, because they've extended the practice times for their middle school, so the rec can't have the gym until six P.M. And it's only, we can't have it at all on Wednesdays, there's a couple Fridays that we can't have it, which is traditionally our game days, so our kids can't play games on those weeks, because that just takes us out of the games, you know, cycle, so it's a challenge, especially for the little kids, starting a practice at six P.M., you know, for a four-year-old child, that's kinda tough. I think next year we're, we're going to have to budget and explore for at least some of the older kids using Nassau Gym or one of the Sanford gyms. You know, it's like fifty dollars a night or something like that, I'm hoping that I can work out a deal with them, but that is a challenge that we're, we're really faced with this year. I was almost questioning if we were gonna have to cut a couple teams out of the picture.
Or combine in the practices.
Yeah, which is really hard, we tried that last year and it really is a zoo, I mean, it really, people do not like that.
They do it at Nassau, but they got a big.
Curtain, yeah.
When you're putting thirty or forty kids on a basketball court.
Without a divider, so.
I coach basketball, I know.
We're disappointed, we're very disappointed with the availability of the gym, that, very disappointed, but, I mean, we're one organization vying for the use of one gym in town, so. How is your cheerleading signups? Is that with basketball?
No, it's, it's a separate, it's its own separate entity, it's during basketball season, they cheer at the basketball games, but it's its own separate entity, so that's another reason why we're here tonight, is because we have fifty.
Okay, so we have around fifty basketball signups, which is down from last year, however, we have twenty-three cheerleading signups, which is huge, so we're still at the seventy-three total participation rate in our programs, which is really good. I think last year we had sixty-two for basketball with no cheer, so we're still up.
Are you taking any more cheers?
Yes, I talked to, to the cheer coach, and I think because it's pre-K to sixth grade, she originally wanted to practice two nights a week and then games, and I'm like, no, you can't do three nights a week, you know, that's too much, so she's gonna make two, she's gonna, I don't know what you call cheer teams.
Squads?
Squads, she's gonna make two squads, one of the younger kids, one of the older kids, and she has, you know, she's gonna coach both groups, but she has a assistant for each age level, so she's got plenty of help, and she's able to use the cafeteria, which is better, so she has it Tuesdays. Squads, she's gonna make two squads, one of the younger kids, one of the older kids, so, and she has, you know, she's gonna coach both groups, but she has an assistant for each age level, so she's got plenty of help, and she's able to use the cafeteria, which is better, so she has it Tuesdays and Thursdays, and I think that it's gonna be huge, I think we're really excited about adding that back in.
Yeah, so unfortunately, it wasn't budget season last year, we didn't plan to offer cheerleading again, and then when we did, we had no idea that we would have 23 kids that signed up for it, so we're faced with not having uniforms for them.
Yeah.
And not having another meeting in time to get uniforms for them, we're coming to the board to request that you allow us to move some money from another part of our budget to cover buying uniforms for these kids, otherwise, they may not have them.
Do you have an idea what's...
Yeah, so we had $600 set aside to expand the ice rink, and the committee voted at the last meeting not to spend that money, we also budgeted $1,400 for concession equipment, and we only spent around seven, I believe. So we have extra money in both of those lines, I mean, we'll still need to buy a new liner for the rink, but I think, between the two, and then, we didn't budget any sponsor money, and soccer season, we brought in $600 in sponsor money, so I expect the same result for basketball.
Do you have an idea what the uniforms are gonna cost?
So at this point, we're looking at about $675 to outfit 23 kids with shirts, shirts, bottoms.
Shirt.
Pretty much talking about moving one line item is almost gonna take care of it anyways.
Correct.
We just want your permission, because the committee won't meet in time to vote to do that.
We don't have time to vote on it.
Okay with you?
It's fine with me.
Yeah, it's fine.
Thank you very much.
So that's pretty much the long and the short of our update and our request.
That sounds great.
Yeah, how's the, uh, how's the well come along?
So we have the well, we, um, and I, oh gosh, it was something crazy like 60-something gallons per whatever, I don't know.
Per minute?
Per minute?
Whatever it is, it was a very high, he sent me a video and the water was just...
Was it coming over the well?
I don't know.
Alright, 60 gallons?
I'm not a well person.
It's huge.
It's a lot, it was a lot, like, he was like, holy smokes.
Explains why Wilson Lake is low.
We just need the, um, we want to get a padlock to lock it, and there was one other recommendation he made of things...
Cap the well off, lock that, so nobody can open the well up, right?
Right, that's what our plan was, so...
And then we were gonna put something over it.
Is the whole project done?
Um, no, I think that we still have, um, the electricity piece of it to do.
But the well is done?
But the well's done and ready and...
We just can't use it until we get electricity run to it.
Yeah, so we're working on...
Does the water line run to it?
That, we're...
Have they run the water line? Have they run the water line to the well?
So the well...
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
Will might know.
Well, if they ran the water line, usually they run the electric, I didn't know if it just wasn't hooked up in the building or...
No, no, the electric hasn't been run.
So they haven't run the water line?
They haven't run the water line, no, right now what we have is water access at the actual well.
Okay.
So Will hasn't done any work yet.
Do you have a, like a yad hydrant on the well, at the well?
I think that's what it is.
Yeah, but it...
It's weird looking though.
It's a funny little handle you pull out?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what it is.
Then you just need the power to power the well.
We just need, yeah.
Yeah.
What's going on with the electrician, is there anything we can do?
So we're looking for, we put it out for pricing, and we're going to have our pricing, I would hope, by our meeting on the second week in November, so we can... We have not yet, but we plan on it.
I'll give you his email, he should, just tell him that, you know, you're a town department.
What time on the second?
Sorry?
What time is your meeting on the second?
6:15. It's the second Monday.
Oh, I do have one more, I guess, question for Jen.
No, the second Monday.
Second Monday is the 11th, I'm sorry, November 11th, that's Veterans Day.
Yeah, and we did talk about Lisa sending an email out, everybody still wanted to meet on that day.
Um, Jen, I had received an email from you about two members that hadn't been sworn in, and I'm trusting they have been?
One?
Okay, I'll reach out again.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good job.
Very good job.
Excellent. Okay, District 1?
Lisa, I'm gonna text you, I'm sorry, the electrician.
Thank you.
I'm Will Engle, District 1, so going back to the last week, I brought you guys about me meeting with the gentleman on West Shore Drive, the engineer, and I took down your questions, and I talked to him today, and I sent Jen over, we'll meet him, talk for quite a while, then he emailed me a bunch of bullets of what we talked about, I think Jen has it, she'll give it to you guys, what we talked, just bullets what we talked about, but I narrowed it down, so the $3,000 would be for them to do the sketch, and they do all the grant write, and they would submit the grant, so that'd be for the $3,000. And he said that, and I asked him, you know, what is, how, what his company is on, like ratings on getting it back, he said they did five of them last year, and two, the five towns they did the grant for, they got three of them back, that his, that his company was awarded, so I'm kind of coming to you guys, you know, I'm kind of stuck between a rock and a hard spot of doing it or not doing it, I mean, I don't want to spend $3,000, thus not get it, or take the gamble and maybe see, because he, I mean, it's $95,000 they'll match us with, and he said probably, he was thinking to do something like that, we'd probably look at maybe another 75, 80 that we'd have to match it with, so I mean, it's, I don't know, I don't know. And I think it's just a gamble, or...
Would this $3,000 come out of your budget?
Yeah, it would, and I have the money in there to do it.
I don't think we've ever hired a grant writer in the past.
And I understand what he's talking about, because you're kind of gonna catch 22 with this, because if he spends the $3,000...
And doesn't get it.
And say, but he does get it.
Yeah.
Then we have to come up with 80 grand.
Yeah.
And now, you know...
Yeah, but you have a period of time to come up with the money, you don't need it tomorrow.
If it were, then it goes on next year's bound meeting.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but then you, you know, you have that risk of, you know, making sure that, you know...
The worst-case scenario, you go back to the...
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, you know, do you...
If for some reason we went out to town meeting and they voted it down. It just goes back into the fund, doesn't it?
Would it sell, would it sell $3,000?
$3,000.
I know, but I'm just saying, you know...
I mean, it's, uh, it's, uh...
It's a risk, but, I mean, it's, they're 50, they've got a 50/50.
It's a risk, but it's better than 50/50.
Probably, uh, it's probably moving in the right direction.
I think it is.
I think it's a good idea.
I think Will's interested, he just want, I think he wants your support, but in case it falls through, I mean, he didn't make that decision alone.
No.
Good evening, Dave Langley, interim Fire Chief, last fall, well, let's see, I mean, yes, it was brought to my attention of the possible structural failure of that culvert on West Shore Drive, this is how this whole thing had gotten started, when I was the road commissioner on that end, so seeing that, we do have a contingency plan, there's over 200 homes on the other side of that culvert, there's only one way in, one way out, if we did have a structural failure, our plan is the higher contractors, we're gonna fill it in with rocks, we'll plate it, do what we need to do, but just keep that in mind, like you said, it's do you, don't you, it's one of those things, but if there is, Sleutman Winchell's seen it, you guys have seen the pictures, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's just gonna be time eventually, when, hopefully nothing does happen, but we do have a plan in place, so just to...
The only issue I have with it is the state's requiring us to make it so boats can get through there, okay?
Correct, because...
But they're not helping us pay to make it so they can get their boats through there from their state.
And I researched that with the road committee, and we found the language where, after they did that, they put the boat launch in in the 80s, and the powers that be years ago, when they turned it over, they accepted it, and the select members at that time signed it off, said, yes, we'll take ownership of it, so now we're, now we're stuck with it, so...
But they still own the boat launch?
Yeah, correct, yes, they own the road and the boat launch part, but we own...
But there's nothing saying in that, that we couldn't say, hey, you know what, go to the state fishing game or whatever, or wildlife, whatever, and say, you know, if cost effective to us to put two 4-foot culverts in there, and unless you want to pony up and...
Exactly.
Hold the rest of it, I mean, but at this point in time, it might be just, if we can, uh, put in for that grant...
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
And see if it comes through, $3,000.
We'll start with that, see where we go, yeah.
So I just wanted to give you that information, like I said, we do have a contingency plan, so if something did happen, we'd be ready to go.
Sounds good.
And I, and just, I also talked to him some more about it, he said that it'd be probably about January we'd find out, and he recommends in January, if we find out, because I guess, because after this snow goes, they'll survey it, and you have to have it engineered out, you know, for what they're gonna do, and he thinks, he said if we were to go with his company, if we do get it, which, talking to him, if it does all go, I probably end up, will go with his company, because, I mean, this is, this is what they do, I mean, and stuff like that.
We've got to make a decision, but we, we can't just go with that company, because that company could turn around and have, you know, you know, it could cost us quite a bit more because of their design.
Yeah.
And we'd have to go up a bit after that.
We have to by law anyway, so...
Yeah, the whole process.
But that's your recommendation, that's what you're...
If we just, if we decided to go with this company, did they say they would knock that $3,000 off the top price? Remember, we talked about that?
I'm not, I'm not, I didn't ask him about that, I think, I think what the, he was thinking was just to get the grant through and see if we even have the chance of even getting the grant, so, I mean, I've been thinking about doing it, I mean, it's, like you said, I kept trying to, that if we don't, but if we do get it, I think we'd be going in the right direction, so...
He's a grant writer, you know, it's something he knows how to do, so let's...
And he told me, he's had already people that, they're, you know, researching the town, you know, researching West Shore Drive, what they've done, and he actually worked on the boat launch, the one, when they put it in, so he's familiar with what was going on and stuff like that, so...
Okay. I'd say, yeah, go, go forward with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
If you feel comfortable with it.
Alright, thank you.
Beautiful, thank you. Any other department heads, committee chairs? Scene 1?
Yeah, just wanted to give you guys an update on a furnace at the Public Safety Building, things will be being delivered tomorrow at the Public Safety Building, and Mr. Semical's gonna be out of town till Sunday, depending on what his duty call will be on Monday for any problems, between Monday and Wednesday, he'll be in, he's there till it's done, and we'll be up and running, so.
The furnace that's in there now is working a little bit?
Yes, that's correct, yeah, so keep the fingers crossed and go from there, so...
So I have his final check tucked away, so when it's done, if you were the fire chief, somebody can call and tell me, I'll release it to him.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Good. One more time, any other department heads, committee chairs? Nope, okay, moving on to old business, Article 43, application letter.
So this is the first letter that I've had to write to this, so you may want to make some changes to it, but I need, I need to be able to send something to 13th Street, so...
Oh, okay.
If you want to just kind of peruse that, I mean, I'm short and sweet, to the point.
Yeah, yeah, this is basically 13th Street, we denied...
He was denied it, yeah, so I just thought it was...
I abstained from it, so should I still sign it?
Well, you can still, yeah, or at least read it, because there's no paper.
Oh, yeah.
Check that over.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah, it's fine. I would say if he's abstaining, you probably shouldn't sign it, just to keep it, yeah. Okay?
Good.
Okay, do I hear, uh, no, we already voted not to do it, so...
Yeah, so I just made sure so I can mail it.
You're gonna sign it?
Yeah.
Okay, policies to sign.
Uh, next was Wilkins, was Wilkins Road that you went on, I got a couple under 43, sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay.
Article 43, you were gonna take a look at Wilkins?
Okay. Wilkins Road. Okay, Mr. Farmer is here, sure, come on up. Don't start. Okay, I went down and looked at it earlier, and Kim and I went back and looked at it, Dave hadn't had a chance.
Drove by, I was kind of running behind, so I apologize.
Sure, sure, you asked a question last week.
I did, I asked a question whether or not there was an impact to the lake, and your question was, uh, there wasn't, and unfortunately, with what we're trying to do here, that's, that's what this is set up for us, for the impact of the lake, so, um, yeah.
So we went down and looked, the whole road looks good, I thought, it's a nice maintained road. We found, I think we found both sections. There is a section down there where there's a rock, is that...
Oh, yeah.
Here?
Yeah, right at the corner.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what that is.
Yeah, so that's the area we saw there.
Did you see the stake that was there?
I saw one stake by the rock. It's a piece of ledge. Yeah, yes, okay, yeah, and then we did see this section here, and there's a culvert right there.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Okay. So... Yeah, so the answer to the question of whether does it impact the lake, the answer was no. What exactly do you want to do down there, just regrade that and add some gravel, or...
It's just, it's just gravel, and spread the gravel, the cubic yards are in like information that you have back.
Yeah.
And the, all the costs are itemized.
Yeah.
And that's what we would like to do.
You do have a road association down there?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we saw those. I don't know if Great East is listed on the priority watershed list or not. It is, okay.
It's not identified as a risk or a threat, yeah.
No, what's your...
Is this more maintenance than...
The only issue I had was, I thought this was for stopping the impact of the lake.
Right.
And, and I guess when we've discussed this before, you know, we wanted to see where the impact was, and this and that, and I, unfortunately, I asked you what the impact was, and you said there was no impact, so, and then we're talking about grading the road, so I mean, myself, I'm kind of...
It's not like putting in stuff to stop the water from...
Just to make the road smoother, it's not helping the, uh, the lake or anything.
Not helping the impact of the lake.
Yeah.
That area has a number of, that we're doing, has some potholes, that's what we wanted, and get, get our crown built back up again, because the water has come, when it, the ground leaves, as you know, and the water settles in, and then also coming down the slope that, that I've got set to put some gravel on, has, we need more of a crown, and that's where a good part of that, as you saw, are the telephone pole coming down, that's the kind of work that we've done all these years, ourselves.
Yeah, so this is definitely maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, the issue we have with this is, we're setting a really bad precedence here, if we turn around, there's no impact to the lake, it's maintenance.
Right.
But because you're, you're in that area, you qualify, and the dirt road down the road don't.
Right.
And it really sets a bad precedent that we start, we're allowing this to, we're doing this without some sort of reasoning.
Right.
The unfortunate part is, we look through the way this is set up, there's nothing saying we can't.
Right.
Right.
So, I mean, um, we just approved one for the ridge, it was no different, so I think right now, until we have to get this policy set, we're gonna have to grant this, at this point, because there's nothing saying we can't.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Once we get the new policy in place, that, something like this may not go through again, just so you know.
Yes, this may be, this is probably a one-shot deal.
Because, you know, when, when this was passed through, it was supposed to stop erosion from going in the lake, and this and that, you know, it was environmental, you know, not, you know, whether or not it's gonna take struts out of your car, so, and I think we've kind of, we're moving into a gray area here, and I think we ought to approve this for this, right now, until we, um, we have to get this at some point before we get a zillion other ones in here.
Yeah.
Done.
Yeah.
But there's nothing on the front page that says we can't.
No.
Well, and that's the thing, I guess, and just to step in, and this has nothing to do with Mr. Farmer or the road, but I asked you last week if you wanted me to stop taking them, I don't want you to take them just because you feel like you have to approve them based on what the auditor and the legal told us, if they don't qualify, they don't qualify, and I'm not here to make that judgment, because I don't know, I didn't go down there, but don't do it on that case, because I'm still accepting them, you told me to.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I...
Yeah, this one's 11, $1,100 total, correct?
Yes.
But we just denied 13th because they were, it was just sweeping.
But that was sweeping, that was definitely...
But this is bringing it up, bringing the gravel up.
This is regraveling.
As long as you can, you can defend it to the...
Yeah, this is adding material and getting the crown back to the road, the culvert that's there, is that culvert okay?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Okay. I guess, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we, uh, what's the road association, Wilkins Road, we accept the, uh, the Wilkins Road Association, uh, what do we call that now?
Grant.
Grant, we call it grant today, for $1,100, ver. P. S.
I'll second that.
Moved to seconded to approve the grant for Wilkins Road for $1,100, any further discussion?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
But I've had a couple of people in my association that has just wanted a little information about, about this. But I've had a couple of people in, in the, my association that is, uh, just wanted a little information about, about this. If article, if this article, uh, when it, if it is taken before the whole year is up, and, and the money is gone, is that, and, but the, right now it's three thousand dollars, that's the max?
Per calendar year.
Yep.
Calendar, with a calendar year.
Per calendar year.
Once all the money's gone, it's gone.
And then what if there's money left in this article?
It rolls over, it rolls over each year, so we, you know, this article was developed in, in two thousand and eighteen, and we did expend some money in eighteen, so when two thousand and nineteen came, the board didn't need to, didn't feel like they needed to replenish the funds, because there was still quite a bit in there, they'd only awarded a little bit. So, yeah, so right now, there's still forty-one thousand dollars in there, which is going to be less your eleven hundred, so. It'll be after the selectmen decide if they want to put a warrant article on there to keep filling it, but until it, I mean, it's not even halfway after two years, so.
Yeah.
So it just rolls over.
It rolls over.
Okay, I can understand that.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed?
Thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
So we'll be in touch, Mr. Farmer, on some paperwork we'll need, um, in order to cut the check for you, so I'll be in touch the next day or two.
All right, now, when we're going to do it in, in between now and another week or two?
Mm-hmm.
We'll have it all done. Now, does somebody have to come back and, and expect, and inspect it?
It's up to the selectmen.
I'd like to see some pictures.
Yeah, we'll drive, we'll be back up. Let us know when it's done, we'll be back up and take a look.
Okay, that, that, that's fine, and, uh, then I have to come down here and give you the invoices and everything, that all goes along with it, right?
Yep.
Just see Janet.
Yep, thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So this one came in, uh, this is one that you funded in two thousand and eighteen. It's new, um, so if you want, I can scan and email everything to you, so you can review it at your leisure, um, so you don't, not put on the spot to look at it for the first time.
Sure.
All right.
Is that okay?
Sounds good.
Steven?
What's up?
You okay with that?
Just gonna scan and email it to us?
If you can look at it, we'll put it on the agenda for next week.
I was reading it, and I wasn't listening.
Lakeside Drive.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on forty-three?
Um, I was just gonna say that I haven't had any time to work on the application, so, well, probably won't be until after the election.
Okay, that's, that's, next week.
I know, so is it okay?
No, I was just, I was questioning, that is next week, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, lots of things going on next week.
Yep. Okay. Policy sign?
So, uh, first one is the abatement policy, I sent it over to Adonalsson Associates, you reviewed it last week, he has absolutely no changes, so on the last page, it just says reviewed October thirtieth, so just signature line on that one.
Okay. I think we gotta vote on these, right?
Yeah, we're to accept them.
Yeah. Yep, so this will be the abatement policy. Do we hear motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the Town of Acton abatement policy.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed?
All right, the second one, um, the acceptance of the credit and debit card policy, this is almost completely rewritten, as we discussed, so. Town of Acton accepts credit and debit cards, Visa, MasterCard, American Express, and Discover can be used for any service offered by the Town of Acton. Persons using any of these cards as debit or credit will be subject to a two-point-five handling fee. Transactions less than forty dollars will be subject to a flat one-dollar fee. This fee is collected by the processing company and is not a revenue of the Town of Acton. The town does not accept any payments over the phone, however, in rare situations, that payment over the phone is an absolute must, the Board of Selectmen may authorize the Town Administrator to make such a decision on a case-to-case basis. That's been reviewed by the Treasurer as well, should, help me write it.
Should that last part of it read Administrator, or Tax Collector Town Clerk?
Well, I, we go with Administrator, because it could be something, I mean, if we, if we had a, a situation with, um, with a code enforcement permit, do you know what I mean, we don't want it to be tied just to that position.
Okay, good.
So, does that make sense?
Just, yeah. Do I have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion, we accept, uh, the Town, Town of Acton, uh, credit debit card policy.
Second that.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed?
And the last one, the acceptance of payment policies, uh, there were no changes, um, by Auditor or the Treasurer myself, so this one is just a review, you guys didn't have any concerns with it last week either. That one is fairly new, if I recall. It's where we want everybody to be bonded and all the cash to go through the Tax Collector's office.
Yep. Okay, do I hear a motion on this one?
Make a motion, we accept the, uh, payments policy for Town of Acton.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept the Town of Acton's acceptance of payment policy, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed?
Does that feel good, we got through our first three policies?
Yes.
Nice.
I'm hoping that after elections of each year, if the boards change, you know, we can start reviewing them yearly, so that we can, and get in them to everybody, departments and committees and so forth.
Okay. Next item is executive session pursuant to MRSA five oh, four oh five six A. Do we hear motion?
I make a motion, we, uh, go into executive session RS, uh, MRSA four oh five six A.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed? We will be back.
Right here. See, I see I'm in wrong there.
Actually, was it over at Schoolhouse, uh?
I mean, if you do it right.
That, um, that house had a little name? They, uh, they, they pay a private.
But they, like, my mom, they'd ask me saying, hey, I thought I could come through, and then, but just like an hour, a couple hours later, she said they were gone.
But, yeah, and there was no, like, stop and slow signs or anything?
No, she said they just completely took over really.
Well, like, it went slow, because I figured, well, you know.
Right.
If I'm gonna hit, it's gonna be a little slower.
For a while, we gotta get a, um, I'm gonna get a, um, those bars, all right, let me find that, because it's out of order.
Into what?
Well, I have.
Oh, yeah.
You can, is that Sandra Ballack on the website?
Um, the questions are listed on there, yes. I believe, maybe not, I can get you a copy before you leave, if you'd like.
Okay, do I hear a motion to command of executive session?
Motion to command of executive session, MRSA four oh five six A.
I second that.
Moved and seconded to command of executive session, all in favor, all opposed, okay. We, uh...
Action?
Pardon?
I said, action, do you have an action?
We have an action. One of the first actions we've had coming out of executive session, and that action is, actually, we can't make a decision in executive session.
Right.
So, we have to make a decision out here.
Yeah, we have a discussion first.
Can, if you wish.
Yeah.
Well, let's have a motion, and then the discussion.
I make a motion that we appoint, uh, Richard Smith as, um, Fire Chief of the Town of Acton, part-time Fire Chief.
Moved and seconded to appoint Richard Smith as the, uh, part-time Fire Chief of the Town of Acton for the next three years, if I can add that.
May I?
Any further discussion?
Sorry, if I just ask you to amend it and take the part-time out, you never know what's gonna happen the next year or two, I, you know what I mean? He's gonna be, the hours are gonna be based on what you decide and salary.
True, he's, yeah, he's Fire Chief, yeah, yeah, so. Just plain, yes, just plain Fire Chief.
Just the legality, you know, I'm always, I'm always looking at worst case, so, sorry.
Yep, yep, okay, so it's been amended, that's.
Remove that, so we're.
Yeah, it's, it's amended to be Fire Chief.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, um, it's been a.
You were on the commission, so.
I'm the liaison, I was on the commission, and, uh, we had a bunch of really good people on that, that commission, it was actually kind of, it was almost fun. So, uh, we had a lot of, uh, input from all these people, even, uh, from the fellow from out of town, Darren, he, he was, uh, he was really good, um, you know, during this whole process, we had originally gone in for a full-time, and then things kind of evolved, and, um, we came up with this idea of doing a part-time, um, we, we did the advertisements, um, and, at the end of the day, um, we interviewed Mr. Smith last night, um, it was unanimous, everybody was excited, um, we think it's gonna be a really good asset to the Town of Acton, so I have no doubts in my mind, so.
Anything you want to add? Nope, okay. Um, call, let's see, yeah, let's just do it that way.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
Sounds good. So what we have is certificate of appointment, title thirty A, MRSA twenty-six oh two, Selectman, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, to Richard S. Smith. The Selectman for the Municipality of Acton, do it accordance with the provisions of the laws of the State of Maine, hereby appoint you as Fire Chief, within and for the Municipality of Acton until November first, two thousand and twenty-two, given under our hand this thirtieth day of October, two thousand and nineteen. Do we hear a motion? I guess we already made a motion, we were just doing it, doing it backwards, okay. Okay, um, we've already done discussion, call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? We'll sign this.
Thank you, we've got a, a great, a great person, and looking forward to going back, and we're all small-town people, and.
You're going back to assistant, right?
Yes.
You're not just leaving us, right?
No, we may need you again, don't go too far. At any particular level, you know?
Yes, I realize that, so, alright.
I appreciate all you've done.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Policies, first reading, who we got?
David, Edward, and Kimberly. Alright, so just three, access to a public meeting policy, that one hasn't been done in eight or nine years, access to public records under the freedom of information, um, with your approval, I'm gonna send that one over to the attorney, 'cause there's a lot of statutes in there, I think some of the fees have changed, and we would wanna increase them to better cover the actual costs, so I'm gonna send that one over if it's okay, and then, the appointments and reappointment policy, um, I need you to take a close look at, um, especially the, the removal parts towards the end, we've had some, a couple of different committees with some missing members, um, that've kinda started asking about this, so, if you could review those three, I'll send the one over to attorney, and we can talk about them next week.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
You're welcome, man.
Goat Hill.
Alright, I get to spend some time with Carl Davis this week, and, uh, this is what they're looking for, so the town of Acton is currently accepting sealed bids for three thousand three hundred and fifty feet of ADA compliant trail work to be done at Goat Hill, twelve oh five H Road. Specs of the work are bring all grades to five percent or less, create new trail sections where necessary to conform to ADA compliance, stabilize size of the trails and create drainage where needed, applying compact four-to-six inch by five-feet-wide aggregate mix surfacing on geotexture over existing bays. Winning bidder must be a member of the Professional Trail Builders Association or equivalent. Additionally, said bidder must have proof of liability insurance, workers comp or be deemed exempt by the state. Said work must be, is gonna be completed in the spring, therefore bids must be valid through September of two thousand and twenty, questions regarding the prize, project, we've got Carl's information, and then the drop dead date was Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, uh, so this was written by Carl, um, I essentially just did the secretarial work, we sent it over to, um, the state as well, that does the reimbursement, they made, um, you know, some of that is their language, so I, um, ask it not to change it, but I need you to approve it.
Yep. Do we hear a motion approved?
I make a motion to approve the, um, ADA compliant trail work to be done at Goat Hill.
Do we hear a second?
I'll second it.
Move and seconded, any further discussion?
So, he had spoken to about this, about this additional grant piece some time ago, so, because of the amount that it's gonna cost, uh, the state and the town requires to go out to bid, so.
Okay. Sounds good, and they had, they had the money to do all that, so.
Yes, yep.
Okay, call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Good. Okay. Forest conservation committee resignation. What do we have here? Well, that's not good.
He's got a lot going on in his life right now, and hopes that you'll reconsider him down the road, but right now, he really wants to see somebody that can make time.
We're already looking for somebody already, aren't we? For that committee?
Well, that's the million-dollar question that we, we can get into, there is one individual that has missed meetings, but he is, I double-checked, but he has sworn in on it, so, we need to tighten up our policies and follow some of those.
So, this is dated, uh, October twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, to the board of selectmen. I, Kyle Davis, I'm going to step down from the forest conservation commission, uh, committee, uh, hopeful to be rejoined at a later time, when things change in my personal life, so, two wishes.
I make a motion, we accept, uh, Carl Davis' resignation from the forest conservation committee, with regrets.
I'll second that.
Okay, move and seconded to accept his resignation, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. Okay, audit to date, we've already taken care of that. Yeah, appointment openings.
Okay, so, uh, we have, um, an appointment for Dennis Long, he is taking, uh, Tom Cassin's spot on the planning board.
Okay.
Let's just do them all at once.
Yep.
Uh, Virginia Shea for the warden position, Sheila Conway for deputy warden, those are all, these are all certified people that have done it before, Nancy Rumah as a ballot clerk, Marita Lowell, Don Van Syndrome, Jeanette Burse, Estelle Gore, Joan Nass, Virginia DeBoer, Jenny Morse, and Sheila Conway is in there again as a ballot clerk and a warden, and William Lottz.
Okay. We'll have to do these in groups?
Yeah.
Because of the nature of what they are. So, let's start with the, uh, planning board member. So, selectman's office, these are all the same, yeah, these are all the same, as far as certificate of appointment, title thirty A, MRS A twenty-six oh two, they're all the same that way. Selectman's office, municipality of Acton, two, Dennis Long, the selectman of the municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as planning board member, within and for the municipality of Acton, Maine, until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, given under his hand this thirtieth day of October, two thousand and nineteen.
Make a motion to accept Dennis Long to the planning, to become a planning board member.
Second that.
Move and seconded, do accept Dennis Long as a planning board member. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. Okay, audit to date, we've already taken care of that. Yeah, appointment openings.
Okay, so, uh, we have, um, an appointment for Dennis Long, he is taking, uh, Tom Cassin's spot on the planning board.
Okay.
Let's just do them all at once.
Yep.
Uh, Virginia Shea for the warden position, Sheila Conway for deputy warden, those are all certified people that have done it before, Nancy Rumah as a ballot clerk, Marita Lowell, Don Van Syndrome, Jeanette Burse, Estelle Gore, Joan Nass, Virginia DeBoer, Jenny Morse, and Sheila Conway is in there again as a ballot clerk and a warden, and William Lottz.
Okay. We'll have to do these in groups?
Yeah.
Because of the nature of what they are. So, let's start with the, uh, planning board member. So, selectman's office, these are all the same, yeah, these are all the same, as far as certificate of appointment, title thirty A, MRS A twenty-six oh two, they're all the same that way. Selectman's office, municipality of Acton, two, Dennis Long, the selectman of the municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as planning board member, within and for the municipality of Acton, Maine, until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, given under his hand this thirtieth day of October, two thousand and nineteen.
Make a motion to accept Dennis Long to the planning, to become a planning board member.
Second that.
Move and seconded, do accept Dennis Long as a planning board member. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Now. Are these all clerks here?
Uh, you may wanna do, the, the two are wardens in the front, and then the rest are clerks.
Yep.
Ballot clerks.
Okay, so we can, we can group this, this away, we can do a warden and a deputy warden. So.
We can do those two separate, do different positions.
Yeah, but one's a warden, one's a deputy warden, it's, it's close enough. Okay, selectman's office, municipality of Acton, and this is to Virginia Shea, selectman's office and municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as warden, within the municipality of Acton, until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, given under his hand this thirtieth day of October, two thousand and nineteen.
Make a motion to accept Dennis Long to the planning, to become a planning board member.
Second that.
Move and seconded, do accept Dennis Long as a planning board member. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Now. Are these all clerks here?
Uh, you may wanna do, the, the two are wardens in the front, and then the rest are clerks.
Yep.
Ballot clerks.
Okay, so we can, we can group this, this away, we can do a warden and a deputy warden. So.
We can do those two separate, do different positions.
Yeah, but one's a warden, one's a deputy warden, it's, it's close enough. Okay, selectman's office, municipality of Acton, and this is to Virginia Shea, selectman's office and municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as warden, within the municipality of Acton, until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, given under his hand this thirtieth day of October, two thousand and nineteen. The second one I have is to Sheila Conway as the deputy warden, so what is your wishes on these two?
Make a motion to accept Virginia Shea as warden, and to accept Sheila Conway as deputy warden.
I'll second that.
Move and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Is it my signature just gave up? The more I sign, the worse it gets. I'll tell you about what my, what my wife calls it.
Chicken scratch.
No, no.
Horse?
Oh, yeah. That's something, no, just gonna leave it alone. I'll tell you later.
That good, huh?
Oh, yeah. 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 Okay. Trying to get these in an order, so I can.
Whip them out?
Yeah. Okay, these are all the same, except different names. Selectman's office, municipality of Acton, two, Nancy Rumah, actually, here's how we'll do it, selectman's office, municipality of Acton, the selectman's office and municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as ballot clerk, within and for the municipality of Acton, Maine, of Acton, until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, given under his hand this thirtieth day of October, two thousand and nineteen, and we have Nancy Rumah, Marita Lowell, Don.
Van Syndrome.
Van Syndrome, Jeanette Beers, Estelle Gore, Joan Nass, Virginia DeBoer, Jenny Morse, Sheila Conway, and William Lottz.
I make a motion that we, uh, appoint, um.
You wanna do it as read?
Do it, do it as read, yeah.
That works, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we're taped, so.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
I'll name them all off.
Hmm?
No, no, sorry, it's too late.
That's what I'm saying, as read.
As read.
Good, as read, we're good.
Okay, you seconded, you seconded, okay. Move and seconded to, to nominate those that we just read, to ballot clerk, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed?
I was getting ready to read them all off again.
So, as you're signing, um, so we're gonna have, uh, two planning board alternate seats open, uh, after speaking to code enforcement, one's gonna be for a year, and one's gonna be for two years, 'cause we need to get them back on staggered expirations, and we are going to have, we know we have at least the forest conservation, um, seat open, so. Forest conservation is gonna be until the end of June of twenty, twenty twenty-two. So, I'm giving you, um, two attachments, if I can actually have you look at the second page first. So, if you look at the second page in the very bottom, what you see there are, um, the outstanding taxes for the years from two thousand and thirteen, um, down, so, and then if you flip back to the top, you'll see that this property, uh, this is a property on H. Road, thirty-nine acres, that if you look, based on the taxes, we acquired in two thousand and sixteen, when the town of Acton acquires it, it becomes exempt, and we no longer charge taxes on it, because it's town-owned, so, um, we did put this property out to bid once before, um, and we didn't get any interest on it, in an effort to clean up the accounts, uh, one of the things the auditors recommended, we're gonna keep it at this point, unless you guys decide differently, is to make a motion to write off those three years, I mean, we're never gonna collect that, if you ever decide to, to sell it, I mean, we can take the amount of taxes and, and all of that into consideration, but they're just sitting on the books.
Yep.
And there's really no reason for them to.
Definitely.
Typically, when you put it out to bid, they have to pay the back taxes on it.
Mm-hmm.
But if we get rid of this now, we can run back to that.
We'll still know what.
You can have a set, right, we'll always know the amount, so you'll set a, a minimum, and you can set the minimum based on what was.
Yep.
But the taxes, those three taxes, they were assessed to the prior owner, so you would have to resupplement to somebody else, you can't, and we can't collect that from anybody else.
Yeah.
That owner is come and gone, um, and then.
This was.
How many acres is this?
Thirty-nine acres, CF Investment was the name of the property owner.
This was down here in the gully, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had a lot of people look at it, but.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's not, not an easy spot to do anything with.
So, when you look at that second page, you can see, so we're getting ready to send out foreclosure notices for seventeen, that shows you how much we have in outstanding taxes, eighteen people are paying on, nineteen, and then the nineteen-two is the supplement, so.
Yep.
But we're just trying to clean up the accounts, you'll see something similar to personal property in the next couple of weeks as well.
Okay, yep, you need a motion on that, or just?
Yeah, I'm all set, as long as you know that we're doing it, and you're okay with it.
Sounds good.
So, do we try to put this up to sale again?
That, that's up to you, um, if you guys, it's a, well, some, I mean, some selectmen like to keep X amount of just town property, I mean.
Try to hang on to it, I was just wondering.
Yeah.
I can get you a list of everything you own for another meeting.
Yeah, it's probably not a bad idea, 'cause.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, you know.
And how much is tax required?
You two don't know what we have, I know kind of, because I've only been here, been here a while, but, not a bad idea to do, yeah, I guess an update, and we can.
Um, I'm not sure I'll have it for next week, but definitely the week after.
Um, speaking of next week.
Yes, sir.
Is that our class, do you know?
It is your class.
Okay. That's in Augusta.
What time, Kim just asked me, I'll have to check my office.
Yeah, I think it is in Augusta, but I think it gets out at like four-thirty.
Okay.
And if.
We have the, oh, so you're gonna be the classy, won't be coming to the neighbors thing in Sanford with them?
No. And that's, that's a week, that's a week from tonight.
Wednesday, yeah.
So, what do we wanna do about selectman's meeting next week?
Um, it's up to you.
I'm not gonna. I think it is in Augusta, but I think it gets out at like 4:30. And if.
We have the, oh, so you're gonna be the class, you won't be coming to the neighbors thing in Sanford with them?
No. And that's, that's a week, that's a week from tonight. So what do we want to do about Selectman's meeting next week?
Um, it's up to you. I mean, I, you know, I'm not gonna, not encourage you to cancel it because of the election, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I, I think at this point, we probably ought to just cancel next week's meeting.
As long as you come in to sign.
Even if we try to get back from Augusta in time, we get out of there at 4:30.
Right.
It's still almost a two hour ride.
Right, right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, we've got enough going on. I mean, we, we'll give us a week to catch up on some of this. We've, I mean, it's, figure eight o'clock, we're not even halfway through, so we've got a lot going on.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So we'll cancel next week.
Cancel next week's Selectman's meeting. If we need to do something, holler, and we can do a special or something. Okay. Sign request, Newfield.
So, it's from some of the, uh, Newfield Town Administrator. Jennifer, I'm hoping you received the check for reimbursement for Newfield's share for the fence at Balch Dam. We did receive that, it's been credited back to the account. One of the last times that Jeff, I'm not sure who that is, but Jeff was at the dam. He noticed that all but one of the danger do not enter restricted signs are missing. He needs eight signs. I looked back to see where the signs ordered, and I noticed that the town of Newfield paid for the signs and installed them last time in 2017. She's attached a copy of the sign and the invoice, and they would like us to now pay for these seven signs this time.
We have an account to take that of?
Um, I'm sure I can find a miscellaneous sign account. Like seven, yes.
Yeah.
And then, uh, Will, would you mind putting them up if it's on our side?
Okay.
You okay with us purchasing those?
Yeah.
I think if we wouldn't have billed them for half of it, we might not have seen this, but.
Oh, well, I mean, we're, we were good.
Back in 17? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't know. I'll order them. I still think that the signs will be less than half we got back, so.
Yep.
All right, I'll get those ordered, thank you.
Okay. Okay, executive session is next, but I think let's do a public comment, because we're not gonna, when we come back out of executive, we're probably just gonna go. Sound logical?
Sounds good to me.
Um, perhaps if we make a decision.
Well, we can come back out, make a, yeah, we can do that, but just, just so people don't hang around, it's the last thing we have on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah, so let's do a public comment. Anyone with a public, have anything they'd like to say? Going once, going twice. Okay, um, just quick on the announcements, we're still looking for a videographer. Croc Fest is this Saturday. That's to benefit the library. State Elections is Tuesday, right here at the Town Hall. Planning Board, uh, Planning Board hearing is on November 7th at 7 o'clock. Transfer Station will be closed on November 11th. Town Report Letters are due by the 15th. Town Hall will be closed, uh, November 27 and 28 for Thanksgiving. They haven't changed the name of that one yet, have they?
No, sir.
It's still Thanksgiving, okay.
I was trying to decide if I should post about Veterans Day on the 11th. I'm kinda scared to.
Tree, I can only be serious so long and I've hit it. Uh, tree lighting is November, November 30th.
Did you want to just announce that planning board public hearings, just so we don't get a lot of?
Yes.
It's not just a random.
Town of Acton Public Notice, the Acton Planning Board will hold a public hearing Thursday, November 7th at 7:00 PM to discuss a site plan review application submitted by Hopper Road Event Rentals LLC to establish an event facility, map 234 lot 046189, Hopper Road.
Okay. We hear a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
That's gonna be the same.
So, MRS A 4056A.
Yep, okay. All in favor, all opposed? Okay, we're going executive session.
Wow, good for you.
Wow, broken mission this stuff, I gotta go get you. We all work together.
To do the animal patrol.
Are you the one that has the animal patrol? Oh, so you, Jerry?
Yeah.
Oh, we're taking the boy, you stopped at my house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. How are you?
Good, 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 good. It was another black dog who was, um, enchanting.
What is it?
Yeah, look, just like my dog. Let's show you a picture. It wasn't my dog.
Yeah, yeah.
No. It didn't have any column or anything, you know? But it's a lot of black cats.
It's probably one, look at it.
Oh, really? I can find it now. Just, just like I said, they, they all look like, real.
That's true.
No, they all go. They all look like, I can't help it.
That's fair.
Black is what, you know what I mean, they're doing this.
This light.
But it didn't have any column or anything.
No color, no letters.
No. You know, you wanna find something?
I hear you.
Yeah. When I go home, I'll find it.
That's my house, you go out, see your daughters, that's my, it was pleasant.
Oh, yeah.
It's short, it's in the yard.
Really?
I'm not a disrespected person, I'm disrespected. I think people feel to recall.
I remember one kitten, some, years ago, basically, I see a dog that she needs. Now it's, I got something, called the dog, and I was like, oh, God. Now, come on. It, you know, and it, you know, just called her over. Things that the dog was too, the other day, that Laura, not my dog, and I'm, and Fred did, and, uh, you know, a friendly dog. And then the neighbor came out, and, you know, it was great, you know?
I said, we want to, uh, go to, uh, animal, this one.
Yeah.
The day, see, the girl threw that, you know, they don't know.
I know. I can't find those, sorry, but it was a black dog.
The fluffy around the collar, it's kind of, yeah.
No, it looked like my dog, but it wasn't my dog.
Right.
It was a cat, and, uh, they're friendly dogs, right?
Yeah. I ain't sure if it hurt it, but it hasn't hurt it, he's been around, checking, he's been around.
Yeah, yeah.
He's scared to death of turtles.
Really?
Has a big turtles, probably, incredibly.
Oh, yeah.
These things are huge. Scary.
Yeah.
It's all.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if it's been that bad.
Could be. Mine gets to forty times, twice. The dead. I can't find it, but when I go home, I'll probably find it, and I'll send it to you.
All right, yeah, that'll, that'll work.
Gee.
I haven't seen this as well.
Oh, yeah. Somebody can find it.
Would someone try to see some, uh, jewelry or something?
Oh.
Uh, that's not out there.
But we have been listening to people, they're saying something to you.
Oh.
Okay.
If I treat some people, they have a treat, in return.
Oh, yeah.
They'll get no word.
And, and you're doing your job.
Trying. I'm interested in that a long time. Millions at all.
Thousands, probably seven, yeah. I, I got, I got sixteen thousand.
Wow.
And it's, it do even hit, you know?
Oh, of course.
This, it's amazing technology.
It sure is.
This is my office, right, I can scan, I can print.
With that?
Yeah. I'm, I'm real estate, I'm in the office.
Yes, everything, imagine everything is compacted into that one device.
Yeah.
You remember the, on the wall?
Back to change, do you remember the back to change? Well, in my business, um, I don't even have a one.
No.
And then, and nothing to cable, so, yeah, so, it's not a machine, like, mini internet. But, you know, I have an internet, some of these ads, they have all the same thing that a cable has. You know, like, Kino TV, it's just everything.
They have Netflix, they can get it, and they can make it with a fire stick, they can.
I do have a fire stick.
Do you like?
Yeah, I do, I do.
You can get plenty of stations, I know there's different sites.
You get a lot of ads, you get a lot of, yes, you get a lot, a lot. I do have Netflix, too. But I get a lot, you know, you need Netflix, because you're prime, but you get a lot of ads.
Absolutely, the fire stick.
Right, on the fire stick.
That's.
And, and my son does it for me, because I don't have the technology to.
I get lost in it.
Okay. But, yeah, it's, so, really, well, I pay the numbers, um, and the internet, you know, that, it's all, you know, it's. It could be a little cheap if we had it on, more.
I think, yeah.
It was, uh.
Yeah, it's had over chats, uh, and I can think of two, I get, I have the best splinters.
What do you have?
Uh, turbo.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's the best, I guess. My app is a lot of screen, mothers in Florida, that's where you.
Yeah.
To me, it doesn't seem all that bad.
Yeah.
I don't see how to adjust it like Shaggy.
Well, yeah. Here, let me stop, it's okay. All right, Jerry, come on in. Ask her if she's still asleep. I'm gonna ask her if she's asleep. Okay, just go. Jen? 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 You still want to get a drawing? The camera? No. Okay, all right, Jen, thank you. Yes, thank you. Yes? Oh, okay, yep.
We have gotten rid of a lot of beans.
Well, that's good.
And people are just grateful and thankful and.
It's a good time to eat, too, you know?
Because it's getting cold, maybe.
I love beans. Two dozen, so, I don't get them.
Two dozen, you know?
What's that? On, thank you. Okay, do we hear a motion to come out of executive session?
I make a motion, come out of executive session, MRS A 4056A.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, come out of executive session. Uh, no decisions being made on anything right now, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I will second that motion.
Moved and seconded, do adjourn, all in favor, all opposed, good night, all.